You can do the minutes if you want.
Okay, we are now recording.
Mr. Chairman, I think the clerk is very excited about some minutes that she'd like to present.
Okay. Wonderful.
I think there's a whole bunch of them approved.
If we could get approval of the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Let me ask, why do you?
Yeah, why is this? What is this?
We're all caught up now.
We don't want to embarrass the both.
I make a motion.
We all had them on email, so I don't.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept all the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
How many is that again?
Twelve.
No, I'm just, sorry, I don't, you don't have to answer that.
Too many, too many to count.
Mr. Chairman, we have two public hearings scheduled for tonight, the first of which is, look at the agenda, is a public hearing for a rezoning request from the R-two to the BG District. Everybody knows the property is, I think, three forty-two West Entrance Road. It's been a barber shop for many years, and the applicant is a Sanchez, I want to make sure I say it, Josephina Leon Sanchez.
Is Josephina here?
She's not here, okay. The request was to turn that property which is currently zoned R-two, which is residential, medium density residential, kind of adjacent to Maple Lane, and nearly at the terminus of the town limits, on the south side of West Entrance Road. I think the next property is actually outside town limits, on the bank, I think there's been some signs on there for sale periodically, some vacant property, which is adjacent to it, and then Sherman Bond, I think is the first house.
There's a trailer beside Sherman Bond, I think. It's two, Sherman Bond got two houses, then it's a trailer, I think.
Right, but Sherman lives in the county, and this is actually inside town limits, the last developed property inside the town limits, and the old barber shop that sat there for many years, Mr. Browner operated out of. The property has been purchased, as I understand, there is deemed recorded in the courthouse, and the request is to rezone it to Business General, kind of a broad zoning classification, which would allow any of the use by rights, and I can read some of those to you if you'd like, but the intended purpose is for a convenience store, potentially serving some meals, convenience store to provide options here in town. Jennifer has talked probably more extensively than I have with Ms. Sanchez about intended activities, but it meets a retail definition, and retail activities are permissible in the general business. Retail activities are not permissible in the residential district, even if you have a home occupation. And a home occupation would require you to live on the property and limit the square footage to certain things with no employees on the property. So, in order to effectuate the intended purpose or allow the intended purpose, the rezoning would be required. The property has been a barber shop for many, many years, and somebody asked, why is it a barber shop and zoned residential? I don't know, in nineteen ninety-two, when this map was created, how that was done, or why that was done in that format, but it was zoned R-two, medium density residential, and it's my expectation that the barber shop had been there for many years with a non-conforming grandfather type activity, and once the request is to change the activity away from being a barber shop, here we are in the zoning.
I think before it was a barber shop years ago, Bill Gilliland ran a putt-putt there, I think.
Yeah, that was back in the seventies. I do.
A little before time.
It was here when I came here in seventy-three.
But in nineteen ninety-two, when the town, and that map reflects nineteen ninety-two and any revision since then, except probably for the past seven or eight years, and in fact, we're going to revise this map here very shortly, the property was never, the zoning classification has never been changed since nineteen ninety-two. That entire map, now there were parts of town, and you guys may remember, and I don't, that live over there, may have been annexed inside into town, or was already existing in town. I didn't know where the town's electric generating plant was annexed into town, and this part of town, Evan and Forest for the most part was added, along with Walmart and food line areas. This may have been historical, pre-nineteen ninety-two, inside the town limits. And you can correct, was Maple Lane inside town prior to ninety-two? It was, it was not added, okay.
It was within town limits from sixty-eight, when I built my house.
It had been in town.
In sixty, sixty-three.
Okay, this is an existing or historical piece of property, and the zoning may not have changed in nineteen ninety-two, but this map was produced in nineteen ninety-two. And some may remember the annexation boundary adjustments that the town conducted in nineteen ninety, probably in nineteen ninety-one, and then the map was produced in ninety-two.
There's no other business, there's no other business property in close proximity to that.
I would say community convenience, or David Lee's, Arby's old, maybe the storage buildings, are probably the closest commercial venture, maybe Kensington Forest, if that's a commercial venture.
But there's no, no real retail.
Other than community convenience.
Yep, that's on Main Street.
It's on Main Street, that is correct.
In fact, I went out and checked, twenty, roughly twenty-five houses between Main Street and the entrance to Pickett.
Probably also correct.
On that property, and roughly fifteen in Maple Lane.
That's correct.
Right behind it.
Is it fifteen homes in Maple Lane?
Roughly, yes.
We do have an obligation to open a public hearing.
Oh, absolutely.
If you don't mind, and then we can continue the discussion afterwards.
Let us open the public hearing, and then we'll continue, we'll hear from the public.
And I will step away from the microphone.
Now, there's no one here to speak on the behalf of.
I'm not meant to see a chance, but I don't, apparently she's not here.
I did have Charlie Atkinson, town employee, to hand deliver the letters to the residents, to make sure that y'all got them in time.
We did not get one.
No.
I didn't get one.
There's a reason.
They only went to adjacent landowners.
The state code does require that we send adjoining property owners a letter. Not everybody gets one, only adjoining property owners, and I bet you guys across the street got one. I bet you Wayne Grattan got one, because he wraps in adjacent and behind. But I try to be very careful, because I don't want to overly advertise, because someone's going to say, I didn't get one. So I try to stay to the state code, which is adjacent, which includes across the street and at an angle, and I can read to you who that is. Letters were sent, no good without glass. Prudential's task. Wayne Grattan received a letter, Tondra Tucker Spradley, Darlene Dabney, care of David Dobson, Josephina Leon Sanchez, citizen of the banking trust, which is their property adjacent on West Entrance, and Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Jefferson, Barbara Jones, I think I know you. And of course, the county is obligated to receive a letter, a certified letter or notification, because it's within one mile of their territorial boundaries, by state code, we have to send one to the county. But we send them to adjacent property owners, not everybody gets one, okay? Per state code. All right.
May I ask if there's anybody here who has a strong, who has a desire to speak in favor of this rezoning? That's what I thought. My, you know, it's, I would just like to say that I would not be in favor of it, straight off the bat, because it's putting a business, rezoning, a, kind of a spot rezoning.
Yeah, I.
Residence, it was not, it was not a business zone. It was not a business zone, that's a different.
Barber shop for the last thirty years.
Okay.
May I make a statement?
Longer than that.
I think the chairman can recognize who it is.
Yeah, please, okay, absolutely.
I just want to say one thing when I was.
Would you step to the microphone, please?
Carol Hagaman, thirty-seven Maple Lane. When I was on town council, and I think it was nineteen ninety-four, I don't remember the exact year, the issue came up with the barber shop being there, and could it operate in the residential? And at the time, council voted that it could only be a barber shop. It could not be resident, I mean, commercial property. And I cannot remember the exact date, but it was back in the, I think it was ninety-two to ninety-six I was on, I can't remember exactly.
And if somebody were intending to open up a barber shop back, I think we wouldn't be here tonight. But we're beyond a barber shop, so does some rezoning.
So that's just a historical fact that happened with town council.
Would anybody else like to address the public hearing? Please, step forward to the microphone.
Okay, I know it used to be a barber shop.
You state your name, please.
Oh, Tawandra Spradley, I'm sorry, I live at three forty-seven West Entrance Road, directly across the street from the barber shop. But when it was a barber shop, it was privately owned, and it wasn't open late at night, by five o'clock, everyone was gone, there was no traffic or anything going on there. And personally, I do not want a convenience store directly across the street from me. It's one right at the corner, like he said, on Main Street. If anybody needs a convenience store, it's right there. And it hasn't been rezoned in all this time, even when it was a beauty parlor or anything, and I can't find a reason to rezone it now. You know, that's basically what I have to say, I just don't want it there.
Any questions?
Can I ask Phillip a quick question? Phillip.
Yes.
The owners of that property now could do what with it?
Um, they could do a barber shop. If they wanted to continue operation of a barber shop, I think with the council, I haven't been, and thank you for the history of it. But use by right in the R-two district are pretty limited to residential. It's a fairly broad type of residential that can go there, it can be a single-family home, or perhaps multiple single-family homes, depending on the area. A single-family home in that district requires ten thousand square feet. So it's less than a quarter acre lot, by our zoning designation, do a single-family home. And there are multiple lots that are owned by that particular property. Maybe four or five lots that are owned by that, by the Ms. Sanchez. If enough room, there could be multiple single families. It requires fourteen thousand square feet in order to build a duplex, and a duplex, which is a two-family home, attached, separate entrances and separate electric meters and kitchens and bathrooms, not what I used to live in in college, where you got to walk through somebody else's apartment to get upstairs or anything like that. So it could be a two-family, and with enough square footage, technically, it could be townhouses placed there, not multifamily. So everybody here understands, by town Blackstone zoning designation, the townhouse, which is side by side, is different than multifamily, because multifamily is one unit above the other unit. That's the difference in Blackstone. It may be a different definition somewhere else, but that's what, how we describe multifamily from townhouse. But townhouse is a use by right in that zoning district. However, multifamily is not a use by right in that zoning district. Manufactured homes are not permitted in that zoning district, but modular homes, which has a different building standard, could be put there on the same standard as a single-family or a stick-built home. Okay? Yes, sir.
Okay, you saying that this property has already been purchased?
I believe it has been, yes.
Was, they told us before this land was purchased?
It's not time to get this town to do so.
Well, no, I'm just saying, would anyone have seen?
I always recommend the folks that speak to me to always get a contingency, a zoning contingency or a study period, but no, I've never met with Ms. Sanchez, and I have not spoken to her about that topic.
But the reason I ask that question is, there are multiple other uses for the property other than retail. And so we're not, they've got lots of other things, options that they could use on that property. And I'm just not in favor of this at all, I wouldn't want it beside me, and so I'm not going to put it beside somebody else in a residential area.
What would I, this, what uses are permissible in a general business?
It's kind of our catch-all. The only things that are not permitted there, that are traditional type of retail or office or something like that, are those items that are specific to our adult entertainment district. For those of you that remember twenty years ago, somebody opened an adult novelty store in town, and in response to town council, and I guess the planning commission at the time came up with an adult entertainment district, which is the food line and Walmart shopping center. And that's where that sort of thing, needs to be, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, things like that, are required to be at the, at the, one of the two shopping centers. Not the out parcels, where Wendy's and Chubbies and, not those parcels, but the shopping centers in the back. I can read you that list if you like.
That's okay.
Okay. But anything you think of that is a traditional downtown, retail, insurance business, a jewelry store, those kinds of things obviously are permissible. Furniture stores, McDonald's, a Hardee's, that sort of thing, could technically go there with a general business zoning classification. Can't say that it would necessarily go there. I don't think the traffic would support necessarily some of those kinds of things, but certainly not a chain. In my experience, they're looking for traffic counts, and they're looking for, you know, accessibility to utilities, all that sort of thing. Our plan is to make it a convenience store for Hispanic customers, similar to the one across there. Again, I haven't talked to Josephina Leon Sanchez, but I understand that that could be, yes. Do you? There you go. I don't know the people, I really don't, yeah. Do they live on High Street? No, they live on, you go Benwitty, and you take a left, where that first road is. High Street. Where they tore down that house? Mm-hmm, right next door. Oh, that's a continuation of High Street. That is High Street, yes, sir. And I know those folks, and they are, their daughter did an internship with the town, so they are nice folks, for sure. The daughter's certainly very pleasant, and their son Danny played soccer with my kids when they were growing up.
All right, anybody else wish?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Please.
My name is Tom Hunter, and I live on thirty-sixth Maple Lane. And to me, the fact that this lady didn't even show up tonight, ought to tell you something. That she's not here to back up what she wants to do. Three point, point three nine acres is not a very big piece of land. My house sits on about that same size. I don't know where they would park, I think he would be drawing undesirable clientele there. I think, I think it would be a bad mistake to let anyone build a convenience store when you got two within spitting distance of each other. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yes, sir, please.
My name is Wayne S. Grattan, I reside at thirty-eight Maple Lane. And I love it there, I love this town, and I do have quite a bit of concern. We got two schools very close to us. And it's a convenience store, it's more or less a quick bite, I would say. We don't have that much pedestrian traffic, but as previously said, there is no parking there. There's two town right-ofways, left and right of the building, and I'm just afraid that it would get traffic backing up to the right-ofways, and didn't mean no control on, and so forth. Another thing we have to consider is lighting. He asked to advertise, we're getting up there in age, as far as the community goes, and I wouldn't want any flashy lights going off at night and so on. Not that, you know, I have knowledge that they would have it, but they would need something to, and to draw the customers. And I appreciate you taking this opportunity to look into it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Barbara Jones, and my house is located three forty-one West Entrance Road. I don't think we have a need for a convenience store right there. And I would like for you all to think about it, and kind of agree with us that we don't want a convenience store right in that section. I thank you all for your time, and your patience.
Thank you for coming.
I have one other question, I want to go.
Sorry, listen to everybody talking and everything, again, my name is Tawandra Spradley, and I live right across the street. And, um, like she was saying, which one of you would like to have a convenience store right across the street from you? Anybody? And like I said, if, like he said, if there were lights flashing or something, which it might not be, but coming through my window, I mean, it's not a good sign, and like I said, it's just for people, public. It's not like retail there, and like I said, it's a retail store right on the corner. You can walk to it, like I said, you could almost sit on it. And you know, I was just wondering if you all would like one right at your front door? I mean, it's something to think about, I know you wouldn't, you don't have to answer me, but I'm just letting you know, I don't. Okay, thank you.
Please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Mike Carney, I'm at forty-one Maple Lane. The rear of my property is also at the rear of this case, this lot that we're talking about. The easement goes behind all of our homes on Maple Lane, on that back lot. So my main concern is the, what was already mentioned, was the traffic and the parking. We've had several trucks that have gone down that road and had to back up in our alley in the easement. It's unimproved, and it's, it's a mess right now, even without much traffic on it at all. So that's, that's one of my concerns, is that where are they going to get the deliveries? Is it going to be, they have to make some improvements there and things, and, and just messing up our current situation. Like, like Mr. Gravit said, I love it here, been here since two thousand eight, we have such a peaceful neighborhood. We don't have, we don't have an official neighborhood watch, but we know when somebody comes down the road that they don't belong, or kind of keep, keep an eye on each other and everything. I don't really have any visibility on West Entrance Road, but I like to keep it safe. I don't know if we can minimize the activity there to do so, I don't, I don't know if that's the answer, but probably not the politically correct answer, but I like it how it is. So, thank you for your time.
All right, then. One motion? Well, we have need to close the public hearing. No one else wishes to address us, so we will close the public hearing. And y'all wish to say anything prior to having a motion? I mean, I, they sound like wonderful people, and I wish them the best of luck in establishing their businesses, but I just don't think this is the appropriate place for them.
Unless someone else on the planning commission thinks otherwise, I think we ought to put it to the question, rather than have a discussion on it. I'll make a motion that we deny the request. I'll second it.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And for those of you in the audience, this will now go to the council on April fifteenth. The ones that did get letters will get another round of letters, but on April fifteenth, the town council will make the final determinations.
Planning commission is always a recommendation, it goes to the full council. So, one more time, it's April fifteenth, and it will be at seven o'clock, not six o'clock. So mark your calendar perfectly if you'd like to come, and it'll also be a public hearing, so they have a chance to address the town council.
And it will be in the newspaper, if y'all read the newspaper, it'll be in the newspaper this week and next week to remind y'all of the date.
Could you repeat that date?
It's April fifteenth, at seven P.M.
Two weeks from the night.
Whenever you say that, I always think of Doug Culver, who always strongly reminded us that it was, that it was a recommendation only, and they were not down.
You can go if you want, or you can stick around and watch democracy in action. That's not an exciting problem.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do have the public hearing for the text. And we can do the rest of the agenda there.
So nice to meet you.
Kind of disappointing that they're not staying. Okay. I guess we also have a, we have three public hearings today. So the second public hearing will be on the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Right?
I'll try to describe it as best I can for you. We've got a, kind of a gray area that has been addressed by the Board of Zoning Appeals, probably over the past two or three years. And it's specific to the R-two district, but I did advertise for the R-one district, but I did not advertise for the RB district, or the RS district, okay? Because the, certainly the RB district, if you read it, it says, follow the R-two. R-three also says same standards as R-two. So I'm asking for you to consider this only in the R-one and the R-two district. I am not addressing Evan and Forest, and that RS suburban district that we have. What we have an issue, and Alan's been through on one occasion, you've also seen this as well, where we have a lot of non-conforming lots in town, okay? A lot. I would say seventy-five percent of our town is a non-conforming lot. The West Blackstone Platte, which is everything that you see in this general area around Viewmac and College Avenue where you live, and runs down to Heat Street, and it even goes across the railroad tracks of Fall Street, Luke Street, are included in that old subdivision platte that was found in eighteen ninety-four. That part of town was subdivided into twenty-five foot lots. So every one of those lots is non-conforming. Two of them, non-conforming, three of them is still non-conforming. Because the minimum lot size, if you're doing a subdivision, which we'll see in a little while, I think Keith is here, on a subdivision request in the R-two district, the minimum width of a new lot being formed in Blackstone must be no less than eighty feet wide. And three-quarters of our town ain't eighty feet wide, okay? Dennis probably lives on an eight-foot lot, you, pretty close, I don't know how far down. Your old house may or may not have eighty feet. Mr. Miller, the home that you rent, that you live in on Broad Street, that isn't eighty feet wide. It's just a lot of non-conform, in fact, I know the houses that you live in is a fifty-five, fifty-foot wide lot.
Mine's like a hundred and seventy-five, I'm one forty.
You got, right much, four hundred there, so. What we've been struggling with at the BZA, and the chairman is here, and Alan also sits on the BZA, is non-conforming lots. These non-conforming properties, specific to the R-two district. These R-two lots that are seventy-five feet, I've been doing those internally with the town, requiring twelve-foot setback. On the ones that are fifty foot or less, or approximately, we had one not long ago, it was fifty-five feet on Main Street, those have been going to the BZA, okay? Truly, that is not the job of the BZA. However, may have been previous to you being on the BZA, I think Mr. Almond and several BZ members at the time really did want to vote on these, okay? But in fact, a variance is determined whether they can offer less rather than the standard, and we're putting the BZA in a tough spot, to be honest with you. Because this is not really a variance request that you're being requested to do. We don't have a rule, and we need to establish a rule. So they don't have to meet every time somebody wants to build on a sixty-foot lot in the R-two district, or a fifty-foot lot, or, twenty-five's a little, little tough, right? So these guys are getting thrown to the wolves, and we had a pretty testy one the other day, and I think that fellow hasn't gone away, and I think he has an expectation that there'll be a legal remedy for that one. For example, that gentleman had a fifty-five-foot wide lot that he was attempting to purchase, he hadn't purchased it yet, and it was on Main Street, fifty-five feet wide, he was offering seventeen feet of setback, which is the equivalent of what a setback would be required for a hundred and ten-foot lot. He was offering twice the setback. Sadly, it got turned down, okay? It got turned down. We need to set and establish a setback. Our ordinance is currently saying, and I think it's included in your package, at some point, Jennifer came to me today and made some copies, and it's this particular page here where it says non-conforming lots. Probably the last two or three pages in your package. And what it specifically says, and I'll paraphrase, is that non-conforming lots can be used as long as the setback can be met. Well, here's the catch-22 we've got, okay? The catch-22 is, in the R- The catch-22 is, in the R-two district, in the R-one district, you're required only fifteen percent of the lot width as a side setback. So on these non-conforming lots, say it's fifty feet.
That's nothing.
That's only a seven-and-a-half foot setback. Too small. That's why we're going to the BZA. I propose creating an option to say for a non-conforming lot, you either meet twelve feet, which is the fifteen percent of an eighty-foot lot, okay? Or the fifteen percent, whichever is greater, whichever is greater. So nobody at any time would have less than twelve feet of side setback, which is what an eighty-foot lot, which is the standard lot in the R-two district mandates. But if we don't have a standard, they're going to keep on having to vote on these rascals and have these public hearings and voting on something that's not really a variance because you don't have a standard. If I follow the rule, one hundred percent, it's only seven-and-a-half feet. And that's not a lot. That's, you know, houses where Sharon Orange, my mother-in-law used to live, God, you look at Dick Allen's window and throw an ice cube across there and hit the house, okay? So what I'm asking to do is create a standard, and that standard is not fifteen percent. It's twelve feet, which is fifteen percent of eighty feet, or the fifteen percent whichever is greater. And we leave these guys with that variance responsibility, and then the staff can, we can just tell people, hey, guys, it's not a, I don't know, it is a four feet minimum on each side.
Makes sense to me.
I think it's good to establish an actual.
Something, because we're just kind of shooting from the hip a little bit. And depending on, you know, the people that come up, now the last planning commission, or BZA meeting was, they was, it was pretty testy. And, but he was offering seventeen feet on each side.
Why was that turned down? I'm not, it confuses me. No, never mind. Okay.
I wouldn't go there.
You watch the video, it's on YouTube, I think. The video's on YouTube. But I think it exposed you guys a little bit. Because we weren't talking about a variance, we were talking about personal stuff. And that's really what we need to stay away from.
All right, so let's stay.
Arbitrator.
This will help, this will help stay away from that.
The public hearing is to establish twelve feet, not less than twelve feet. So they got to modify their house style, it may be a shotgun, it may be skinnier, whatever he's got to do. If you want to use that fifty-five-foot lot or a fifty-foot lot. And remember one thing.
What you, you're talking about the setback on each side, which.
The front setbacks were established.
Right.
Front setback is thirty-five feet or in line with the adjacent house. If that's less than thirty-five feet, so you don't have somebody sitting twenty feet farther back than maybe some of these old houses on Main Street or something like that, or in a different district.
Oh, I got a question. You remember when that house was built up in the west end, I think it was Third Street? And you remember they had to run it in this way? So.
On Second Street.
It was one of them.
Right, next to the church.
No, it was going, they're following down, it was Third Street at the bottom.
Fifty feet lot. The house fit in there with a twelve-foot setback, but the problem was the door was facing the side. And council said, we don't want that anymore. So now we hold to establish, whatever model you pick, you got to have the door facing the front.
Just want the house oriented to the.
They got a big modular home. It's not a double, it's a modular home. It's a nice house. But the neighbor looks in the back door.
Right.
From the side. It wasn't illegal, but council has, they've certainly said, we're not grooving on that. Let's come up plan B. So those folks have done what they said, the council's made it clear, we want the door to face the front. And that, we, any model that we look at is going to have to have a door facing the front. Okay, so you don't just squeeze it in there. You can squeeze it in there, but the door needs to be facing the street. The front door.
All right, so that's a description of what we're doing. Now we have to open the public hearing. Okay, so we will declare the public hearing to be open and ask anybody that wants to address us to please come forward and do so. Does not seem, doesn't, 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 yeah, gender a lot of passion.
Garnering a lot of passion there.
Not like the last one.
Yeah. Okay. All right, since nobody wishes to address us, and we've had the option to look at the language, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I just, I think that something needs to be established for the side setbacks.
Were you on that board of zoning appeals? Okay, so, okay. You have a little expertise in this area.
I like, I like what Philip was suggesting, you know, as the twelve-foot or the fifteen percent.
And that's what I came up with, because it's the same as a standard new lot that would be subdivided in that district in the R-one and the R-two districts, eighty feet.
But you say on fifty-foot lot, fifteen percent is seven feet.
Seven feet, not too small.
That's too.
So establish on twelve.
It's going to be twelve feet regardless, at least twelve feet.
At least, at least. And I think that's.
Not less than twelve feet.
I think it's good to establish.
And there was, there was one property, the Utley property, that there was discussion about it, but luckily there was an alley there, and so you could move the house further towards the alley to keep it away from the neighbor's house.
Like eight feet on one side.
And Philip can make that determination too, if, when we be.
Real close. If you know where the alleys live, those houses.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Be a good shot, shoot that one over a little bit.
Okay. Somebody, anybody have a motion?
A motion that we set aside, recommend the set, side setback to twelve feet or fifteen percent whichever is better.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And that passes to.
You are Maisha, right?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Hello, sorry I'm late, you guys.
It's okay, so this is the.
We'll get you started, and then I'm sure they'll have questions.
This is operated as a dance hall at fourteen forty-one South Main Street.
If you're.
Any preliminary statement?
The right place for a dance hall, but the dance hall is considered a conditional use. And the three elements that are standard of a dance hall is amplified music, play music, I assume. You're going to have ABC license, I assume, and the potential for someone to get up and dance.
Yes, sir.
Yep, we got a dance hall. And so some time ago, after the Lucky Eights debacle, I think the town council and planning commission worked together and created a conditional use process, not just for the restaurant part, and not just for the bar part, but when those elements are all there, that it's a conditional use, and indeed it's a conditional use in the adult district or the adult entertainment district. And this is in the Walmart Shopping Center. The address is fourteen forty-one. What used to be in that?
I don't know. He said it used to be a game room or something.
Game room, players, players gaming. There you go, okay? And this is Maisha Anderson. If you, Atkinson, if y'all have any questions, I can answer them, or if you'd like presentation from.
First, let's open the public hearing.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
All right, if you'd like to bring forth your proposal.
Yes, so, um, great, okay. So I'm sorry I'm late, you guys. I had to come from North Carolina, so it was a ride. But I grew up in Nottaway County. I graduated Nottaway High School in two thousand and twelve. I was around when the Lucky Eights era was happening, but unfortunately, I wasn't old enough to be a part of all the chaos, which is a kind of good thing. But I kind of want to bring something back to the town of Blackstone. Even though we don't really have much of a nightlife, I feel that Safari Sports Bar and Grill would be pretty, you know, lucrative for the town. People are always leaving out of Blackstone to find something to do versus to having people to come here for something to do. If you guys have took the chance to go through my little booklet that took me so long to get here, because I was creating it for you all to read, I have a pretty structured format on how I would like to run things. Pretty much, I wanted to be an upscale sports bar and grill for twenty-five and up, and I only want to operate on days Thursday through Sunday from around four to one P.M., A.M. I plan on having security armed and certified officers along with the town of Blackstone to be there to secure the premises, to make sure everybody's okay, and there's nothing happening. Of course, I won't have this type of crowd. And then on top of that, I plan on improvising and putting together this thing called a tipsy carriage. So what that means is those that's in the town radius that would like to come to the Sports Bar and Grill but decide to have a couple of drinks to avoid getting a DUI or accident or anything like that, they could just book the tipsy carriage and they can get picked up and dropped back off at home. We're bringing new food to the area, Caribbean food, Jamaican cuisine, soul food, things that people will have to travel out of Blackstone to get versus traveling into Blackstone to get, if that makes sense. Thursday through Saturday will be four to one, and the Sunday's just twelve to eight. Just the restaurant, no night call, nothing like that.
A DJ, DJs?
Yes, I'm going to have DJs, live bands, local artists. If you guys watch VH1, I have been on Love and Hip Hop Atlanta, which is a real, really big hip-hop TV show. So I have a couple of my cast members that's coming in. Just bringing something new. Loop games, I have search halls for the older people. I'm trying to get Tim McGraw, I don't know if he will still come, just things like that for to have into the town of Blackstone. Bring some excitement here. Yes, sir. So the businesses that I own there are called developmental disability group homes. So what I do is I provide housing for individuals that suffer from intellectual or developmental disabilities. So I just wanted to bring this here to my hometown, because it's nothing to do. You know, people are always traveling to Petersburg, or they're traveling to Richmond or Farnville, and it's just leaving our little town with nothing. So I have, I say per shift, ten. Ten, yes. I want it locked now. I don't want in and out. I want it to be secured because I'm young. So, you know, my age, I don't want people to think that it's going to be a bunch of chaos because how old I am, and I wanted to have it structured. You get what I'm saying? I don't want it to be a bunch of fights. I don't want it to be a lot of hurrah. I just want it to be a nice upscale setting. You have to abide by the dress code. You have to be twenty-five. If not, you cannot come in. Yeah, that's on the nightclub nights. Monday through Wednesday, without the nightclub hours, it's very family-oriented.
What will be the maximum occupancy of your?
Um, see, he didn't give me that yet, I don't believe.
Is that in your application?
Hmm, not sure.
And the reason he asked, when Lucky Eights was approved. These are conditions that were put on Lucky Eights. And I'll read them out very loud for everybody to hear and for the camera. It had a hundred and fifty maximum occupancy, but I know that's more than four thousand square foot in that building. And yours, reading your lease is four thousand square feet. Cameras are going to be working on all exits outside of each door. Obtain the occupancy permit through the state of Virginia, which is obligated.
Yes, sir.
Report ABC violations, and this letter says to Chief Guzmeyak, but it's Chief Murphy now.
Okay.
Make tapes available to the chief as requested.
Yes, sir.
Stadium light to be installed by the town, not applicable. Change exit from rear to Broad Street, not applicable. I think you only got one exit, but I guess you got a back.
It's a back area, but, yeah, from the kitchen, but I don't want anybody walking through. That's unsanitary.
Public entrance will only.
In the front, yes, sir.
And proposal submitted by Lucky Eight has made part of the permit, but these were the terms and conditions. I don't know if you want to codify the hours of operation, if that's something you'd like to, if you're agreeable to that. It's a conditional use permit, and does the purpose so you guys can negotiate some hours.
Okay, what, what kind of hours would you guys approve of?
About three o'clock in the morning?
Oh, no, I'm not going, I go to sleep, no. So, yeah, on Sunday, twelve noon to eight, yeah. So it's like a brunch. Yes, I got you, yes. I forgot to submit the floor plan layout, because I had all of that, so you guys can see how to be decorated and done. Like at the bar area, it'd be little swings for you to sit on. It's like, it's going to be really fancy. I vested a lot into this.
Other than the stadium light and the back door and.
Yeah, I can keep it under that.
I don't know if a hundred and fifty maximum occupancy, if that was arbitrary with, with.
And that counts staff?
Well, how big is the building?
It's four thousand. It is huge. Yeah, it's a big building. Like it's the old Kato's, if you guys are familiar with that. So it's a lot in there, but.
Yes, sir.
By the building being like a little big, like depending on her, like the artist's year brand, it depends on like how many people will come in. But if there's a certain amount to cut off, say if it's like, say if the building holds four hundred people, that's where we'll cut off at, even if we still have more tickets to sell for like the nightclub, like.
I think just trying to read the tea leaves when Lucky Eight was, they were having DJs and stuff.
Yeah, he, this is my husband, by the way. He's not from the area, so he has not a clue about Lucky Eight.
And I think the intention was that they got a little rabid down there.
Yeah.
That they kept the occupancy down to keep them from having DJ shows and all that kind of stuff.
See, I've grown to know the area now. I've been with it going on eight years. Been married for two. So I know they like kind of owe the music. So that's why I was gravitating to.
Pretty much, yeah.
Search halls, Ronnie Bear, things of that nature, stuff like that, because they.
Yeah.
But the conditions do require you to have an occupancy, and the building official will provide that and that sort of thing. You can use that as the benchmark that they, if it's four hundred people, if it's three hundred people, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Certain nights we might try to do like comedy shows, bring like, because I know a couple of comedy acts myself, like, if the guy to be with, what's his name, Le Duvall, Jay Ski, like him and my brother like real cool, so he do a lot of my brother Christmas parties. I can get him to calm down and stuff like that.
So would this, would this have to go to, I mean, even if we approve, would it have to go to the building grounds committee for? No, sir. It doesn't have to go to the building and grounds committee. It only has to go back to town council for final approval. And Jennifer put the ads in the paper, so it'll be in the paper irregardless of which y'all vote tonight, unless you table it. It'll go to the town council on the fifteenth of April.
So once you find out the occupancy.
Well, it does say, if, it doesn't, this one specifically said one fifty, because I think the intention was to suppress the number of folks. I don't know, but it says.
You want me to look it up?
She will obtain the occupancy permit through the state of Virginia.
Right, so it, so what I was going to say is you're going to have like a hostess that had like a little.
Absolutely. Full ride security, yes, sir. The little clicker?
Little clicker.
Yeah. Yes, sir. I'm going to have all of that, so windows is cut off. So I believe in CYA at all times, so that's my motto, and my motto, and that's what I plan on doing, so, yeah.
So what you could do is, and we're just reading out the old conditions, conditions two through five apply, which are cameras to be working at all exits.
Yes, sir.
Obtain occupancy permit through the state of Virginia. Report ABC violations to the chief. Make tapes available to the chief as requested, and that's two through five. And then if you wanted to codify the hours of operation, based on what she's telling you from four to one Thursday through Saturday, you could do that, and then what, eight o'clock on Sundays? Is there a closing hour from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Um, I said, I said from Monday to Wednesday, like ten, just to give everybody. But I don't want to kind of, you know, interfere with Pizza Hut. I don't want to be like, oh, wow, nobody's coming to get any food here because we got all this good food there. So I kind of want to, you know, still give everybody else a chance to make some, some change, if that makes sense. So when I'm looking on the commercial property safety requirements for maximum occupancy, it says fifty per foot of exit, let me see.
So a quick question for you, Ms. Atkinson. The MVP game room right now has those black curtains in front of it and.
That's going to be gone.
So you're going to have it.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be gone. I'm going to remodel the whole entire thing. I don't know how to read this thing.
They will have to get an occupancy permit that'll limit the.
It'll limit it based on fire code and that's.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't want that.
Okay.
Is there a sprinkler system in there now?
Yes, sir, it is. It's one in the side.
It's new enough that I would think, yes, since Walmart was built in the mid-nineties.
Yeah, it's in there. Yeah, it's a sprinkler system in there. The back, we're renovating and putting a big kitchen, putting an extra bathroom in there, because it's only one bathroom at the moment, which, you know, is like right across from my kitchen would be, which is not sanitary to me, so we got all of that going on. The carpets are coming up, we're getting, what is the floor called? Proxy? Epoxy floors. Like I said, the swings are going to be by the bars, going to have like a little stage area, so enough tavers and lounge chairs. It's going to be really nice.
Would it be appropriate to have the fire marshal go in there and check?
It may be, we'll have to.
Yeah, that's fine, totally, yeah.
The fire marshal, I think, is going to establish the occupancy.
Okay, yes, sir. I had to go through that for my group home, so, yeah.
And if there are not sprinklers, if I know the building official here, he can require you to put sprinklers.
Yeah, they have them in there, yeah.
If there's not already, I think the building is required, but she'll have to follow building code and.
And when Lucky Eight was there, we put some, I'm not sure we put restrictions on that when it was originally done, but somewhere along the way.
I think it wasn't originally done, but after the brew hop.
We put on.
Came back and required a conditional use permit.
Well, in what conditions other than, I think there were more conditions than this. Well, in what conditions, other than, I think there were more conditions than this, because. There was alm- almost a, uh, timeframe in there for us to look at it again, if you remember.
I've seen this before, and it may very well be something else, Jennifer looked it up in the minutes today and, and pulled it out, and pulled the file, but. If, there's things like, maybe show the security at every door, if you remember with players bait. And in bait shops, there was a requirement that there was security at the doors when they were operating, um, hours of operation. Uh, and I think, yeah, in six months or a year, after the opening of the building, you can come back and reevaluate the permit.
Okay, yeah, that's cool, with me.
Are you a security guard in the army?
Yes, sir. And licensed, I'm not just, anybody locals, I go to real security firms.
If we couldn't get our security, we always had, like, the city's police officer, so. It wasn't no sitting in the parking lot once the party or whatever was over, getting your car, you was gone, it wasn't no sitting in the parking lot and nothing.
I'm glad you brought that up, cuz it has been an instrument.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I don't believe it's either in or out.
Because, you know, sometimes, some, sometimes, you know, people just trying to get the security to look, oh, he's security. But, yeah, you're not gonna play with this police officer right here, though, know what I'm saying? That's why I always had it like that, I had security, but I also made sure police was out there with no lights flashing, getting your cops, go. With it no sitting in the parking lot.
Alright. Any other questions? Anybody else wish to speak on the matter?
I will.
Do you wanna confirm hours, just when we're including?
If the planning commission like to do it, I, I just like that, I don't know Maisha, and I don't know her husband in the back. But if we're picking a spot in Blackstone, like, like the last request, this is probably as close to appropriate a spot to do that. Some people may not like nightclubs, some people may like nightclubs, but if you're gonna have a nightclub, you're probably in the right spot.
Yeah, that's why I said sports bar and lounge, you know.
You're gonna be cutting yourself short.
Yeah, pretty much.
The entertainment district of the town.
Yeah.
You put the conditions and terms and those kind of things, you may add to that list, and, and you can agree to them, or.
Yeah, I'm all for it, I just wanna bring something to Blackstone, because it's. Most places go to two, but, yeah. Like a one, one thirty, yeah.
That's cool, Blackstone too, too.
I think ABC. I think ABC may have those rules, uh, ABC commission.
Now, now I was trying to start, and I was just, you know, asking the question.
Yeah, that's true, um. Yeah, so.
What businesses are located beside it?
Dollar Tree and Pizza Hut, and the nail salon, and the APC store, and Walmart.
There's a bait store in there, and I think a Verizon store.
Yeah, and Verizon, yeah.
Bait shop at the very end of the APC.
So that's why I'm trying to like keep it at those days, really, because I don't want it to be like a conflict of interest, with Pizza Hut feels like. They aren't getting any business, and then because of like, you know, drinks and things are gonna be served there, the liquor store, like, well, you know, hey, we're just sitting here.
Don't worry about the liquor.
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay, I just wanna make it fair, but I really think the tipsy carriage is gonna be pretty cool. It's warm outside, you get your little drinks, you're just riding down the street on a little bike, they drop you back off at home, so, everybody safe and sound.
So run, run to your hours again.
So, um, Monday through Wednesday are, we're gonna do, I said from noon until ten P M. That's, you know, pretty much all ages, come in, eat by a show, whatever. Um, and then on Thursday through Saturday, from eight P M. Well, the dance hall hours are from nine to one, but bar, food from four to, you know, one P, one A M.
Be like, still up at twelve and go to one A M.
Okay, yeah, that's cool, and Sundays are from twelve to eight.
He said, uh, I wanna get this straight, to enter your club, it must be.
Twenty-five, and you got the dress. Yes, sir, I'm not going far.
It's the eight o'clock hour, y'all start, gonna start checking the ID as well?
Yep, soon as you come in, I have my security there.
So what happens, if you guys are open, like he said, at twelve on the day, and then eight o'clock is the hour when the adult part starts.
Seven thirty. Oh, seven. I'm gonna add dinner by the, in there, give them their wristbands. And I, um, I'm ordering the legit ID scanner, cuz I know people got all type of technology now, so I need to make sure everything's on the up and up.
Right, but as far as like, let's say, uh, I don't know, a family with kids is in there for dinner, and then the adult part kicks in, and they're still eating.
Hmm, well. Yeah, so I think I may have to do it from nine to, you know, give them a little time to get out. You can always, like, somebody can always call in to go tray, but I'll let them know, like, at this certain hours, this is what's going on. Yeah, yeah.
I see what you're saying, cuz, cuz that's how the, that's how Udo was doing the memo. And he was again, the people, like, people was in the bars, and his club lights had started, but people was already in, he wasn't giving people a chance, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Also, is there a way that you could petition it off?
As far as.
You know, like, if you got your dining room here, you wanna have the club over here, you understand what I'm saying?
Put a divider.
Put a divider, yeah, I'm, I have the floor plan for that, I do, well, I know it's probably too late to show, but, um, I did come up with a layout for how it's gonna be.
And move things along, two through five, which are state itself, where you participate and, and have cameras and. Um, ABC violations, you, you have to self-report to the police chief, and then, uh, make the tapes available to the police chief. Do you wanna add anything about the hours? I think, uh, the chairman asked something about one o'clock.
One A, one A M, uh, on Thursday through Saturday. Yeah, the twelve date on Sunday.
We use your hours.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And we'll add those in there.
Alright.
And, uh, so, we're closing at ten o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, and then Sunday. I guess you serve lunch too, so.
Yeah.
To ten o'clock, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we'll go as late as one o'clock. Okay, with the adult portion or the dance hall portion, either eight or nine o'clock.
Yeah, from nine to one, yeah.
And then on Sundays, you're gonna be closed by eight o'clock.
Yeah, so.
We got that?
Yes.
Anything on security, uh, because I do think, and anything on a six-month review to make sure things up and up, we don't have any issues?
I think you need to have a review period in there, it needs to be established now.
And that would only start after the occupancy permit's issued and that you go.
Okay.
I gotta get this body, the chief to come back and, maybe you've had a problem, maybe you had a problem, maybe you wanna add hours to it, and then you can modify.
Six-month probation, oh, great, okay.
Anything on, uh, security? Are we gonna require a security guard during that?
I put everything in the little, this little handy dandy, thank you, if you guys wanna read over it. Okay, yeah.
Town council's gonna vote on it.
Okay.
So your security guards are just being there for, when the club's on?
Yeah, from when the club, yeah, for the club zone, yeah.
Friday, Saturday from eight to one.
Soon as the club, yeah, they'll start arriving around seven.
Yeah, do y'all check for, uh.
Weapons.
Weapons coming in.
Absolutely, sir.
So how will you, how will you accomplish that?
Um, my security guards that I'm hiring, they have the ones and everything to go.
And we make sure, uh, don't play no game, just, just don't use the bars, also, you know.
They frisk. They're real deep searches.
Alright.
In areas under ten thousand square feet, the occupant load shall not exceed one person per five square feet. And you've got four thousand, once that divided by five? Eighty?
That's a lot of people.
In my little building? Oh, I was about to say.
The per, five square feet is one person.
Is that with the furniture, because you gotta have tape, I know certain parts of Virginia, I know a little bit now, y'all, I've been researching.
Eight hundred people, right?
Oh, my wow.
I don't know if the building official's gonna give you eight hundred people.
Yeah, no, cuz I thought it's like a certain amount of chairs and tables and all that kinda good stuff.
Ten thousand square feet, your four, the occupant load shall not exceed one person per five square feet.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Will leave it to the occupancy from the fire marshal and from the building official, and in six months, if we find out, wow, this thing has gotten way big, and then.
It's, listen, you guys, it's gonna be, yeah, it's not gonna be out of control, because I don't like mess. Um, typically, people that say they don't like mess, like mess, but I really don't like mess, like, I'm involved in a lot of stuff, so I can't really carry.